Good evening, everyone. It is April 10th. It is 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the following town council members are present in town council chambers. Council members Maurer, Martin, LaPellis, Formicella, Wales, O'Rourke. Here digitally is council member Rooney and I'm wondering if the iPhone is council member, if it is council member Reed, please unmute yourself. Okay, not hearing that. So tonight we have two members absent, council members Reed and Katuska. If there are no objections, I'm going to pass the consent calendar as presented. There are no objections, I'll pass it. Consent calendar. I make a motion to amend our agenda to include item U under Communications. This evening, we received a communication from Gordon Daring regarding our pavement presentation this evening. And as my understanding in that communication was that there needed to be corrections into the initial analysis and that we will receive an updated analysis and presentation once any issues with their system have been fixed. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Second.
Second by Shirley Pelles. Any other discussion? Are there none? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Are there no nays? Passes. Seven. So item U is now the email from Gordon Daring. Alright, I ask that Communication Items A3U be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. And Item 5, Public Participation. I will begin with those who are in town council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate at our meeting? Yes, sir. Please come down. Name an address for the record.
I'm Jeffrey Giordano and I live at 126 Crownview Drive. I'm a member of the Stevenson Volunteer Fire Company since 2001. Currently serve as the president and assistant chief. I am here speaking in support of the tax abatement ordinance for volunteer and emergency medical services, service personnel and volunteer firefighters. The ordinance is an essential tool that helps us both recruit new members and retain existing ones. I'd like to thank First Selectman, Mr. Ken Kellogg, for supporting and spearheading the initiative. I would ask that the town council and the residents of Monroe, support the ordinance.
Thank you. All right, is there any other member of the public that's here this evening that would like to participate? Name an address for the record, please.
Jason DuVaca, 231 Moon Bay, San Bernardino. So Spring Hill Road closure again. Spent the majority of the morning running around from office to office asking for correct answers. And there's no site plan on file still. This was voted on new January 9th. And so I took the liberty of drawing all my own site plans.
Sure, please just leave them on the table as exhibits.
Just look at them.
Please leave them at the table and we'll get them at our discretion. Continue your participation, please.
This way you can see what you actually voted. And is this right exactly what happened just now? Is exactly how you treat people differently. On January 9th, when Mr. Dala Costa was here, you let him approach the first selectman while the meeting was in place and interrupt the meeting on multiple occasions without any instruction. I've been to enough meetings to know not to do that. But when people don't agree with what you've done, you treat them different, which is fine. I'm fully well used to that now. But basically, this is the house. This is the frontage. This is the road that you're taking away, all in yellow, to benefit a private developer so that they could rezone their property, all without a site plan still. And my real question was, today, I spoke to Public Works and they're saying the road's closed. Now, if the road's closed, please tell me how I can legally access this without any type of right of way on file. Because Mr. Hizza takes a piece of the road and Ms. Lorraine takes a piece of the road, and then this is landlocked, all without a plan. So I made my own site plan for you so you guys can see what you voted on and how you landlocked this property and how unfair this really all actually is. Go back to, you should really be embarrassed of yourself. Everybody makes mistakes. And I've brought several honest reasons. How mistakes were made through this? And you're just sitting on a bad decision? It's disturbing. It really is. Still, you know, Ken won't even pay attention to me, but you know, I brought a piece of ribbon, red teat, symbolism. You never miss a ribbon cutting ceremony, do you? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public participation? In chambers? No? Okay. Is there anyone online that would like to participate at this meeting? Please remember unmute yourself. Name an address, please.
Hey, John. Chris Kreis, 29 Birdseye Road, Monroe, Connecticut. Make sure you can hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
I just want to echo what Chief Giordano said about the volunteer tax abatement. The Monroe Fire Department and myself both support these measures and hope the town council moves it forward. The public hearing and the final vote, as indicated in the first selectman's memo. I have my support for that and our department supports these efforts for those same reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else online via phone? I will note for the record, it is 7:08 PM. Councilmember Reed has logged on. Is there anyone else online that would like to participate at our meeting? That's here digitally. Please remember unmute yourself. None, I'm going to close public participation. We have no appointments this evening. Action items. Town Council Committee on Finance, Education, Health.
We have not met since the last meeting.
I think you have. It's met, right?
I'm sorry.
Reflex.
Met since the last meeting.
Town Council Command, Planing, Zoning, Public Works, Parking, Recreation Matters. Councilmember Rooney.
We have not met, Mr. Chairman. Nothing was brought to me that pertains to council at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin, anything?
I don't have their new minute chat, so I have nothing. Thank you.
Town Council Command, Legislative and Administrative Matters. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did, we did meet actually just tonight. We met on a few items. The Newtown Savings Bank, Infra-Fry Network Deposits Payment, Placement and Custodial Agreements. We met on number 45, which was the Emergency Food and Shelter, National Board Program. We also met on number 47, which is the Solely Engineering Services During Construction Agreement. Number 48, the Summer Enrollment Grant Program with the Connecticut State Department of Education. Number 49, decided to refresh on me, the Department of Transportation's 2022 Small Town Economic Assistance Program Grant Agreement. Number 50 was the Mini Golf To Go Event Booking Contract. 51 was the Three-Day Blinds Contract. We also met on a tax abatement matter. All reached consensus in council tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed. Strategic Plan Committee Meeting. As you may have noticed in our Communication Items, I received an email from the Superintendent of Schools regarding their facilities study. And he wanted to see if town council had any opinion or anything to add to what the scope of that work would be. So I think it's, I'm going to refer this matter to the Strategic Plan Committee. I ask that if any town council member has any, you know, ideas about what more of education should look at through that, to contact the Strategic Planning Members so that I can discuss that. A meeting to come up in the next few weeks.
Not yet.
Not yet. I will get a date in the next, next week, okay? All right. EMS Building Committee, Councilmember Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of in a holding pattern. We're just waiting, reconciling the finances with Burlington, so that's kind of where we are. Nothing has changed since last council. So really don't have much just other than, we are getting better weather now, so we'll be close to getting the painting and all of that completed. Like I said, goal is May 23rd. And that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Open Space Preservation and Acquisition Committee, Councilmember O'Rourke.
Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. And our first selectman's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first, the Wolf Park Fields Project, which I know you guys have, have been acting on various matters, and there's a, there's a final one on tonight's agenda. I'm pleased to announce that we're ready to have a groundbreaking ceremony, which we're going to have on Tuesday, April 18th at noon. Certainly invite any members of council that would like to attend. This again is for the new athletic fields at Wolf Park, providing, you know, one new full-size and one practice-sized field for athletic field behind the existing tennis courts. Wanted to make sure everyone was aware, we'll certainly alert the public as well, that, you know, it will be a construction site, so there will be some orange safety fencing going up, just to delineate the construction zone from the other areas of the park. That'll be alongside the basketball courts, going behind the Wolf's Den Playground and up to the tennis courts. Some heavy equipment is going to be brought in. It will remain on-site once delivered. There will be some other trucks coming in and out for supplies and, and fuel. Construction vehicles will be entering through the main parking lot and traveling alongside the basketball courts. Again, that's why that safety fencing is up there to, to ensure there's a, there's a safe zone there. The footpath will remain open from Great, that goes down to Great Hall Lake, but obviously, we want folks to stay out of the construction fence area and be extra careful. Construction is expected to be completed this fall. A quick update on Pepper Street. The construction company has advised us that they intend to resume work by May 1st. The town is meeting with the project team and I have contacted the state DOT in regards to their pending approvals on this and my desire for them to resolve those. Just, you know, the stuff that we've been working on for quite some time with the OT. They assured me that they're holding an internal meeting on that project, on this project today, and hopefully get that resolved soon as well. The library is holding an open house on Saturday, April 29th, from 10 to 12. The library director specifically wanted to make sure that the council knew that they were invited, and we'd love to have anyone there. It's going to highlight the Makerspace Tours of the Library, showing the various technologies available, and they'll have refreshments in the Lions Club Cafe. Aquarian is working on some improvements to their infrastructure and in some areas extending water mains. The work is being coordinated through the Department of Public Works, and they will be ensuring that appropriate restoration of the roadway is done, fine work. Some of these are in, are already underway. They'll be moving through these roads. I won't read every single section, but you can see the, the six roads, Sunset Hill, Hillside, Barn Hill, Wilton Drive, and Winslow Terrace. And very specific sections of those roads is where that work is occurring. And last but not least, Mariola's Bakery, which we had announced at a previous meeting opening. They held their grand opening and ribbon cutting today, and it's a typo on the address. I believe it's 464 with an extra 6 there. That's all I got tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Maurer.
Just one other park update is that they, they announced today that with the Playground Foundation, that from April 27th to April 30th, the playground will be closed, and they're going to be installing the long backwater zip line. So they have more information coming, but from April, just so the public knows, from April 27th to April 30th, the playground, that playground will be closed.
Thank you. Anything else? Are there none? Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. All right, that's it for Action Items. Unfinished Business. Attorney Lito, you don't have an update, or would you like me to take that at the end of the meeting?
You could take it at the end, but I don't think there's really any spot of update. We give counsel at this point, so we're not wasting your precious time.
All right. New Business. Can I have a motion to accept the following donations, which individually exceed $1,500? Number 1, $5,000 from Anne Marie and Ben Maiini for the food pantry. And number 2, $2,400 from the Friends of the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library for our library program. Motion by Vice Shirley Pelles, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. Again, just our, you know, the town's gratitude for these generous donations. Substantial donation from the Maiinis. As everyone knows, this, these funds are, we put to good use for those residents in need that utilize our food pantry. The Friends of the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library, as you know, exists to support the library, and they are regular contributors to the library. All these funds in the 2,400 here, my understanding, will support various programming that is being done at the library. So with our thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Are there none? All those in favor of accepting those two donations, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay. Are there no nays? This passes 8 to 0. Item B, Tax Abatement Ordinance for Volunteer Emergency Medical Service Personnel and Volunteer Firefighters. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it was brought to my attention some time ago that the Enabling Statute, that our current ordinance, Chapter 470 of our code, that provides for volunteer tax abatements for emergency medical services, volunteers, or volunteer firefighters, that that Enabling Statute was changed a couple of years back to increase the maximum amount that can be abated from $1,000 to $2,000 per year. I have been working to pursue and propose some revisions to our existing ordinance for that reason. I have, as you know, in your packet, given you revision to, proposed revisions to the ordinance with my thanks from Attorney Lito, who obviously helped considerably in that regard as well. We've got a clean copy and a redline version to show the changes. Just to, and I know my memo covers this, but just to give some more background. The changes are in the following categories. Currently, we have two sections of this code. One that pertains to EMS and a separate one that pertains to firefighters. I believe that just kind of occurred over time as, when the Enabling Statute was modified to add a category, I think the most likely, the town at the time, just added another article to the existing code. This proposed revision would repeal both existing Articles 5 and 6, and would replace it with a single Article 5 that would cover both categories of EMS and firefighters. The abatement schedule would be increased. Currently, the $1,000 is the cap that occurs at five or more years of active service. The schedule is simply extended to years 6 through 9 and above in the same increments that it is the $250 a year, so that at nine years or more, you reach a $2,000 maximum abatement per individual. The Veteran and Life statuses in the existing ordinances have been changed to Veteran and Retired Veteran, respectively. And we also updated the eligibility to conform with the state statute, and those benefits were raised to $250 and $500, again, respectively, to each of those categories. Current application practice is kind of memorialized in the revision as well. The gist of it is it removes the assessor from the existing process, which is not where it belongs. This is fully administered by the Finance Department. It does allow for future changes in the determination of active status, so determining whether or not a year counted as a year of active service. Right now, we, we have a bit of a, we have a significant difference in the two existing articles. In the case of firefighters, the definition of active status is locked into the ordinance and can only be amended through another ordinance. The definition for active status for EMS, however, can be modified pursuant to the existing ordinance by the EMS Commission, which is obviously a much simpler process. In these changes, I propose that we find some middle ground in that both can be modified by a, without, without a revision to the ordinance, but by a simple resolution of town council. That I think is fair to both groups, allows for a little bit more flexibility. I know we've had occasion where changes were desired, and we want to have a process to allow for that. I feel that it is appropriate that the legislative body be a party to consideration of any of those changes. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in the, as I go on in this. Those changes, the last change is to take our existing, existing ordinance has the ability to provide an out-of-town resident who is a volunteer to get a, abate taxes in their town where they owe, where they owe in taxes, if they're an out-of-state resident. We are proposing a change to limit that to Connecticut residency only, so if it is another Connecticut municipality, we would still provide that abatement. Just so everyone knows, the way that is done is a check cut directly to that other taxing authority, in the spirit of the statute and the ordinance. We are experiencing many, many logistical challenges with the current procedure when it is an out-of-state volunteer. In many cases, that taxing authority out-of-state have very fundamentally different procedures. They may have different taxing structures. They may not tax property the way they do, they may have different tax liabilities. We've gotten concerns, nothing that we can say with certainty, but we've had concerns that, you know, prior, you know, taxes, prior abatements may have been applied, you know, by other jurisdictions, not in the way Connecticut law intends it to be. It could have gone, let's say, to a, perhaps to a sewer tax, let's say, as opposed to a property tax. And the other challenge is that in some cases, in many cases, finances had the check returned because out-of-state taxing authorities often do not accept partial payments for property taxes. So that creates another challenge. So we want to remove that, that aspect of the ordinance. So in, in doing this, obviously, there's a financial impact that I did go through with our Finance Department quite a bit in modeling the existing complement of volunteers and, you know, presuming that everyone remained eligible and advanced in their years, did a projection. Those impacts were all captured in my proposed budget for Fiscal 24, so we believe that in the existing budget that is currently with Board of Finance, we have, we have accounted for the, the financial impact of these changes. I also presented these changes to the fire departments through the fire chiefs. They had a discussion, reported back that they were in support of the changes, appreciative of it. They did find some minor housekeeping changes that were incorporated, and we, I'm glad they picked those up, but they were in favor of all the, of all the revisions. The EMS Commission reviewed it at my request as well. They had two concerns. One was the revision to allowing the, or requiring the town council to resolve, to change any definitions to active status, as opposed to leaving it with the EMS Commission. Again, I've, I've mentioned my rationale to you, but the, the impacts of those changes, again, I know, with no disrespect to the EMS Commission, it is certainly possible for those changes to have a significant financial impact if the change to eligibility was changed dramatically. And I think that that's a change that should come before council, so that that could be, you know, vetted and discussed, given your, your budgetary authority as well. And it's more appropriate that the legislative body have some input on those changes and not be done solely by the executive branch, i.e. myself or the, the appointed commission. I also feel that any concerns about impacts to volunteers that, you know, could, you know, any concerns of negative impacts to volunteer recruitment, retention, morale by the other side of the equation, restricting, further restricting active status, I think, you know, any concerns in that regard would certainly have a full airing before council. You have public participation on your agenda as a rule every meeting, so any concerns of volunteers or the commission themselves could certainly be fully discussed and vetted, not just at LNA, but here as well, if such changes were a significant concern and, and could be, could certainly be vetted and addressed. Not that I would expect council to, to make any changes that would negatively impact volunteerism. I think it would be quite the opposite. And the other, other aspect that they had raised a concern about was the removal of the Connecticut, I'm sorry, the removal of the out-of-state abatement process. They understood the reasons. Their only request was to see if a check could be issued directly to the individual. And a little of that, in my review of that, and confirming with Attorney Lito, the Enabling State Statute does not, that is not in the spirit of the Enabling State Statute, which is specifically to abate property taxes. And so while we are allowed to have agreements with other municipalities to accept that, we do need to know that it's going towards property taxes, and we would have no way to ensure that a direct payment would go and be properly applied to a tax liability. So the, the FEPs Committee did meet, and they voted to recommend these changes. I, I went through all of these concerns with FEPs as well, and there was consensus that they felt the rationale was appropriate. FEPs did identify some, some, in the, in the defining of terms in the first section, Section 470-13, there was, there are a couple of things that were less, that could have been stated a little more clearly. Asked that I have Attorney Lito review that some more, which he did, and he's, and he did actually make some changes to clarify those definitions. Those, those changes were made at the request of FEPs. As was stated earlier, this was discussed at LNA as well. And I believe that the council, you know, we've kind of met all the requisite reviews ahead of time. Happy to answer any questions or deliberately, you know, or hear any further input, but my, my ask this evening is that should the council have a consensus that these changes are ripe for consideration, that the chair schedule the required public hearing so that a vote could be taken following a public hearing, so that these, these changes could be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. I will note that this did go to LNA, as Councilmember Reed stated during his update. And there were no, there was no discussion of any changes as the amended ordinance is presented. Councilmember Mount, did you have something? I thought you were raising.
Yeah, I was, but.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to say that certainly this ordinance change has my support. Glad to see, hopefully see us moving more in line with what the state allows now, as well as surrounding towns and municipalities. It's a very little bit that we can do for the people who volunteer to keep us safe and keep us healthy. So I'm happy to see this before us, and it has my full support.
Thank you. Sure, Councilmember Martin.
When was the last time you did this?
Well, this chapter has been amended in the past. But this section, I don't recall. It certainly has not been modified during my term as First Selectman, nor is it.
I think 10 years.
It's probably.
It's older than that because the redline is 2001. So my guess would be that 2001 would be the last time it was amended.
If I had to guess, it probably was, you know, when the enabling, you know, honors, following whenever the enabling ordinance, enabling statute, excuse me, was passed. It was probably shortly thereafter. And I'm not sure it's been revisited since. I don't believe the state legislature has acted. You know, this change was when last, I want to say, two or three years that they increased it to 2,000. I don't think they've made a lot of changes in the interim relative to the, you know. It's been $1,000 up until their most recent change to 2,000, which, again, two or three years ago.
Okay, so again, unless there's going to be a change to what's been presented to, I said, in the form of an amendment, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Do I have consensus that we can move this forward to a public hearing and then vote on it at our next meeting? Yes? Yes, 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 yes. Okay. All right. All right, so I'm going to ask First Selectman to schedule, is it a public hearing or a public hearing? Thank you. All right. That's it for Item B. Item C, Resolution 23-047. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-047. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the proposal for engineering and construction-related services, general terms and conditions, and any associated documents binding between Solely Engineering LLC for the Wolf Park Fields Project.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Councilwoman Wells. Mr. Kellogg.
Thank you. As you're well aware, as we discussed this earlier in this meeting, this project is ready to move forward. I had mentioned at the last meeting that the only remaining item to secure was engineering services during construction. This is site inspections, construction administration and management, and dealing with the final punch list inspection for the project. Team has gone out and gotten, and done some due diligence and got a very, got a favorable quote from Solely Engineering, a local business who've provided their proposal and agreement, which has been reviewed and negotiated further by the Town Attorney. The costs for this agreement are, again, within our identified funding for the project. I'd ask that we move this forward so that we can build the fields.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Resolution 23-047? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-047, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. All right, Item D, Resolution 23-048. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-048. Resolved that the Town Council hereby approves and ratifies the Town of Monroe's acknowledgement and acceptance of the program assurances, program requirements, and other terms and conditions of the 2023, 2024 Summer Enrichment Grant Program with the Connecticut State Department of Education by submission of such grant application and authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe any subsequent agreements and associated documents that may be required by the Connecticut State Department of Education to accept any grant award to the Town of Monroe.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Mauer. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you. So Will Halsworth, our Director of Economic and Community Development, working closely with Missy Oroz, our Director of Parks and Rec, identified a grant program through the Connecticut State Department of Education for the Summer Enrichment Grant Program. It's designed to create new opportunities for kids to participate in summer programming. And this would provide, if it were approved, just under $50,000 in a grant, a category called expansion award. And this would allow us to expand programming for the Summer Fun Days Camp Program. If awarded, Missy would offer two additional one-week camps that will provide 80 additional trips for, I'm sorry, that would serve an additional 80 middle school-aged children. The grant would cover staff, transportation, and other ancillary costs. Again, this is a competitive grant, so we're not assured that we will get these funds. But if we were, there are no matching requirements under the grant. The opportunity was identified recently and did have a submission date that was prior to this meeting. The grant award would not be, if we received it, we would not find out until May 1st. I did direct staff to go ahead and submit the grant with the understanding that the application would be withdrawn if it was not approved at this meeting. Therefore, that's why I'm seeking your authorization to ratify this submission. The terms and conditions have been reviewed by the Town Attorney. He attached the opinion letter and asked that you move this forward in hopes that we can provide more programming for our youth here in Monroe.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Call for vote. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-048, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Item E, Resolution 23-050. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-050. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the mini golf-to-go event booking contract and any associated documents binding between mini golf-to-go, Doing Business As Spin Doctor Entertainment, Doing Business As David Parks for the Summer Fun Days Camp Mini Golf Event.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
By Councilmember Mauer. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you. So again, Missy wants to conduct a mini golf activity for the Summer Fun Days Camp in the 2023 season. This is a vendor she's recommended. The booking contract has been provided. It's been reviewed by the Town Attorney. He did make some, did make understandable modification, which was accepted. And I ask that you move this forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-050, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Item F, Resolution 23-051. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-051. Resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe contract and common consent to the electronic, to use electronic records and signatures and any associated documents binding between Three Day Blinds LLC for the Senior Center.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Same by Councilwoman Wells. Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you. So our Community and Social Services Director, Kim Cassia, who's here this evening as well, would like to replace the existing old lines at the Senior Center. Worthy project for sure. She's identified this vendor as appropriate for the effort. The funds are available from funding that was received from the James Fogarty Estate. Their contract has been reviewed by Frank. We have his attached opinion letter. Ask that you move this forward so he can continue to make the improvements that she's been working really hard and doing a great job at making various improvements to this Senior Center.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-051, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Okay. Well, I'm going to take public participation out of order for the second before we go into executive session, only because we have to kick everybody out. So is there any member of the public that would like to speak on an unresolved matter, unfinished business, new business? Okay. What was on second, public participation? All right, I'm going to make a motion to enter executive session inviting Attorney Talberg, Attorney Frank Lito, and First Selectman Ken Kellogg to discuss pending litigation regarding a former town employee matter with Senior Center. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. And we are entering executive session at 7:41 PM. Good evening, everyone. It is 8:00, 7:00 PM. We are out of executive session. No votes were taken. And, well, we already did public participation. So going to adjourn this meeting at 8:07 PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.